Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin tonight with our usual prayer and applause. If you'd like to join with me, it's Barbara Head. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve the citizens of the city. We ask you to be with us tonight as we deliberate the city's business. We ask you to be with all our city employees, keeping them safe and in your will. And we ask you to be with all our citizens. We ask this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present and zero absent.
I'd like to remind the audience to refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior. At this time, please check your cell phones and electronic items to make sure that they are silenced for us during the meeting today.
It's this evening. I'd like to everyone to know that council communication for consent agenda number six has been revised. And the revision includes amounts regarding the major street fiscal year 2017 budget amendments. Also, City Hall will be closed Tuesday, July 4th, for the Independence holiday. And I want everyone to be aware that the Brockway Street reconstruction project is between Pasalt Street and Greshard Avenue that began today and is expected to be completed October 13th. The next service day for the city's waste convenience station is July 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. City residents can use the Holland Avenue entrance to dispose of items that would otherwise be taken to the landfill that curbside does not pick up, such as your building materials. Residents may also drop off recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. With that, Mayor, we are now at personal appearances.
As we begin tonight, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you'll be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from citizens, from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public, to the Citizens Watch and SGTB and to this council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
(Inaudible)
I'm here to speak about the National Association of Letter Carriers and what we bring to Saginaw. My address is 3136 Arbutus Drive in Saginaw Township. The National Association carriers, National Association of Letter Carriers is a labor union, and different unions are appearing before the council to explain what we do. Again, my name is Brad McKenna. I'm past president of Branch 74. I retired in February. NELC Branch 74 represents approximately 248 active retired city letter carriers, over forty who reside in the city of Saginaw. Just for information, there are four different unions that the post office, that represent the post office, American Postal Workers Union, National Rural Letter Carriers, National Postal Mail Handlers, and the National Association of Letter Carriers. Our members sort mail to their routes and they deliver to approximately 65,000 business and residential deliveries in Saginaw County. Our branch represents Saginaw Township, Saginaw City, Frankham, Mute Chestening, and St. Charles. We deliver mail six and seven days a week. Now, we, you know, we deliver, we have a lot of employees that work every Sunday. There are approximately 42 routes in the city of Saginaw. The National Association of Letter Carriers is very community-involved. We are the first sponsors of muscular dystrophy. And in Saginaw, I'm very proud that our branch in four out of the past eight years has been the number one for branches our size and raised over $150,000 for muscular dystrophy in the past 20 years. We have a carrier alert program where carriers watch customers on their route, and we've had a number of carriers who have saved some of our patrons' lives. Just recently, the National Association of Letter Carriers 25th Annual Food Drive was conducted. It's always on the second Saturday in May. Out of the Cumberland Station, which is all out of the city of Saginaw, we collected over 56,000 pounds of food with the help of Hidden Harvest, United Way, and the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council. Because of all of our offices, 140,000 pounds of food came back into Saginaw to over 50 food pantries and agencies in Saginaw. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Diane Mackel.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager, and City Attorney. I'm Diane Mackel. I live at 1917 Colon in the city of Saginaw. And first of all, let me thank you for approving our fireworks permit at the last meeting. It's hard to believe that tomorrow, it will be two weeks and we'll be ready to go again with another fireworks show. And each year, we try to make the show a bigger and better one than the one before. And I think if anybody went to last year's, they'll say it was pretty phenomenal. So, but in order to do that, we need bigger money as well. So, we, there's so many different ways people can help us out. We have a PayPal account attached to our website. We have a GoFundMe account. They can attend one of our events. We have a bike run next Saturday. We have a golf outing in August and a 60-70s dance and auction in September. So, if you can't give a donation, attend an event, or maybe even donate food or something like that to an event, any way you can helps us out. And we definitely need volunteers. We are so in need of volunteers. So, every volunteer we get, that's another bucket in the hand on July 4th to go out into the crowd. So, if you know any volunteers or anybody out there in the public would like to volunteer, just go to our website and get that information and give us a call. We could really use your help. Just a reminder that we are a 501(c)(3) corporation, so everything that's donated is tax deductible. I'd like to thank the City Manager, Tim Morales, Chief Bob Ruth, and his officers, the police reserve officers, the fire marshal, technical services for advertising our events on the city's website, the Sheriff's Department of State Police for their continued support. Special thanks to Phil Carwatt and his staff because we could not do this without them. They are so crucial to our operation. Thank everybody who's given a donation already, including Mayor Protem Clark. Thank you so much for your generous donation. We really appreciate it. So, we hope that you will all join us if you'd like to. Join us on the island. We have a preview section, a special viewing section, and we have a picnic for our major donors. So, if you'd like to go, you have my phone number there. Give me a call. We'll get you some passes. So, thanks again.
Our last speaker this evening is Debbie Melconian.
This evening, I represent GOHI, Get Outside for a Healthy Insight. GOHI is a citizen advocacy group whose mission is to create or revitalize neighborhood parks and other green spaces in Saginaw. We envision innovative parks that welcome people of all ages and abilities to enjoy physical activity outside. GOHI's first project is a revitalization of Wick's Park. GOHI wrote a proposal to the American Planning Association with the intent of being accepted into their Community Planning Assistance Team, CPAT. This program will bring planning resources and opportunities to communities with demonstrated need for assistance and to strengthen the ability of local residents and other stakeholders to influence or determine decisions that affect the quality of their life. We're excited that our proposal was accepted. CPAT works pro bono, and we received a grant from the Saginaw Community Foundation to pay all their expenses for the team that will be coming tomorrow. All of you should have received an email. Seventy-five individuals have been invited. We will have four sessions. The first one is at 10:00 tomorrow morning at the Castle Museum, with one following at 2:00 at the Castle Museum, another one at 4:00 at Neighborhood House, and the final session is at Anderson and Richmond Center at 6:30. We do hope that you can attend one of these. It is a time to just listen to these planners. They want to listen to us, and they will be driving around the city and looking at the parks we currently have. This is just a talking session, and we'd like to invite anyone in the city that would like to attend any of these sessions. Thank you.
And Mayor, with that, the next item is remarks of council.
And council members, you are still limited to five minutes, and we begin with Councilwoman Annie Bench.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone, to our public speakers. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for coming here tonight to share with us, Mr. McKenna, what your group has done and the contributions that they've made to the city. It's very nice to hear from our unions and hear the work that they're doing. Ms. Mackel, thank you to you guys and all the volunteers who make our Fourth of July one of the best in the area. Yeah, it doesn't matter where you find a seat, I think, for the show. It's always a good, a good view and a good program, so definitely something we want to support and appreciate. And Ms. Melconian, thank you. I know Ms. Denzil has been working very hard on this, and I know that the GOHI has been focused on getting this to happen, and it's a good improvement, or good development to have happen here. And I hope we can get to one of those, or several of us can get to a few. The only other thing I think I have is I want to announce that Major Courts for Minors, which is an organization very near and dear to me, has a new location at First Congregational Church. It's 403 South Jefferson, and they are having a taco fundraiser tomorrow from noon until 5:30. So, if anybody is interested in having some delicious food and supporting a great local organization, make sure you hit them up over there and you can stop in and place your orders. Major Courts for Minors over at First Congregational Church. It's a taco fundraiser tomorrow from noon until 5:30, so you can go there directly and place your orders there. But beyond that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, along with Ms. Bench, like to thank our speakers and thank them for your contribution to the community. It goes a long way, and I wanted to thank you. I just a couple of announcements and a couple of thank yous. Dear at the Zoo, it's sponsored by the Reed Association of Saginaw County. It's a group that I'm a member of, a volunteer as well as a board member, and they have this annual event every year at the zoo. It's Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's just a program where we encourage minors or kids to improve their reading skills, as well as serve as some type of mentor program. Something I've been doing for several years. I've been at several of the public schools in the area. Right now, I'm at Arthur Eddy, and it's a great program. The kids really appreciate the time that you spend with them. And it's just a lunch hour one day out the week, so it's well worth the sacrifice. I wanted to thank the police reserves. They had a very busy weekend. Well, I saw them at the Country Music Fest, and the day before, or the night before, they were at my daughter's dance recital at the temple. That's a pretty big event. It's about three-quarters full, and we have members all over the county to come watch these kids dance or do their thing. And it was good to see the police reserves there. They were very professional, very friendly, and I'd just like to thank the police department for utilizing that group. And it's a good source and a good way to save the city a few dollars and keep our residents safe. I also want to thank the Michigan Department of Corrections and city staff for coordinating a meeting with the Michigan Department of Corrections. We had a meeting to discuss some of the transitional homes, and it's just a, just what it is, a transitional homes for those who are recently released from incarceration and they're attempting to transition their way into, back into society. For a number of years, our residents had a concern about the number of the transitional homes and the proximity to each other. In this meeting, they answered, definitely answered a lot of the questions that I know some of the residents have. And I guess you'd be surprised at the actual number that are in the city. It's quite a bit less than what I hear when I attend neighborhood association meetings. And I believe Michigan Department of Corrections, they were going to send a representative to discuss it further with our residents at neighborhood association meetings, I believe at the NAG meeting. And I believe there was an invite to attend the city council meeting. But hopefully, we'll be able to share this information with our residents. But it was a very, very good meeting. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I also attended the KCQ Country Music Festival, and that is a beautiful example of volunteers of every stripe getting together to make that a success. Nonprofit organizations, as was mentioned, our police reserves, and we have representatives of the police department there. They show off their equipment. There are vendors. It's, it's really almost like a mini county fair, if you've attended it before, so very enjoyable. I want to thank the speakers and the organizations they represent. Ms. Mackel, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, in conjunction with the fireworks, we are raising the big flag again on July 4th on the Court Street Bridge. I believe the volunteers show up at 9:30 to 10:00, and then we raise the huge flag. And that event was started by one of the fireworks big sponsors, Mr. Georges of Mike's Wrecker. So, this will be the third year in a row. It is fun, and it is really interesting to see the diverse group of people that come out to put that big flag up. So, I invite everyone to the Court Street Bridge on July 4th to help raise the flag. And that's my comments for this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone who's here and participating and those that are watching at home. Police Department, it was in the news a little bit ago, the SVSU study that was done reflecting that our police department responds to Part 1 crimes in the city in just over seven minutes, which is 36% quicker than the national average of 11 minutes. And I bring it up tonight because there's been some negative coverage, I think, of our police department and failure to respond to a property crime that took place. And that's the reality of the situation. Our police department is very good at responding to serious violent crimes, crimes in progress, but because of the number of police officers that we have, it's harder to get out and get to the property crimes and the lesser significant offenses, the lower category ones. If it is an issue with you, I would suggest that you consider informing the powers that be, state legislators, of just what a significant need that we have in cities like Saginaw and other urban centers around the state. Urge them to do whatever they can to help us provide sufficient numbers of police. To me, I think it's remarkable that we can beat the national average, that we can do what we do with the limited resources that we have. So, I commend the police department. And I also want to thank SVSU for the work that they continue to do with the city, whether it's in providing interns, whether it's doing studies like this, this group has done. It's good to have a partner like that within our community. I also want to thank our letter carriers, the union most certainly, but Patty, if you're watching, thank you for everything that you do. She's my carrier. Couldn't ask for a nicer person. And then, last but not least, as the city continues to work on its core values, if you were to visit the saginaw-michigan.com website, you can see that there is a survey that we are hosting. It's, what do they call it? A word map where you pick the word or words that you think best describe and fit the city. And through that, we are able to kind of determine what our core values are. And it's quite interesting to me to see that right now, diversity is leading with 49 votes, service 34, inclusiveness 30, unity 28, et cetera, et cetera. So, this will be up for a while, but it is limited. It's kind of like act before midnight tonight. Visit our city website, participate in this survey, because we want to know what the residents feel are the core values of our community from the standpoint of what they are and what they should be. So, please respond. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the citizens of Saginaw for coming to the city council meeting today and for people that's viewing us too. I would like to especially thank Brad McKenna from the, from the letter carriers union for coming and letting us know what unions do for the city of Saginaw. I'd like to thank Angie Miller for bringing the unions here too, for letting us know what all the trade unions do here in the city of Saginaw. Because without good labor, we wouldn't have good cars, houses, and all the other things, because they do get a lot of good training to help keep them safe. Diane, I would like to talk to Diane Markie about the fireworks celebration. First of all, I'd like to thank you. We appreciate you. And I mentioned last year that maybe you can get some great donations from the Country Fest. I don't know if you was out there soliciting any funds, but I'm glad to hear that you was. Good. But I did notice during the weeks, I haven't seen anybody taking up any collections on the east side of Saginaw or in BV for, for the fireworks display. I'd be more than willing to help out with that if you need some help with that. I really would. Debbie Melconian, I'd like to thank you always for being the unofficial mayor of the, yeah, of the Neighborhood Association, and thanks for coming and sharing that with us about Hoyt Park. I think that's really exciting to hear about work, or a study going on about Hoyt Park, and I'm really, I mean, I'm sorry, about Wick's Park. I'm really excited about that. I've been around the country, and I've seen some nice parks by the rivers, and I think that can really turn out to be something nice, maybe some big concerts or all type of events can go on there. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that happen. I did want to mention something about One Week One Street in the city of Saginaw. This is the fifth year that it's going on, and they're doing a great job in that corridor by Saginaw High School, bounded by Genesee and the Tracks and Bagley Street. Just so happened, the Wannagast Credit Union headquarters is located on Bagley Street. And I've been begging the credit union to, as a board member, to get involved for four or five years, and they finally, for the last two years, we've been donating at least $9,000 towards fixing up that neighborhood of One Week One Street. And last year, we got a donation of $40,000 from the credit union and another $10,000 from the Credit Union Association of Michigan. So, we're going to fix up a house there for 50, we're going to put $50,000 in that house, and we probably sell that house to someone that needs it for about $30,000. So, it's always good to see citizens like Melconian and any other organization that can help out in the city. It's a beautiful thing. You know, we expect other organizations to do it, but we can do it ourselves. What they do on there on Rucker Street is going to be amazing. I went there last year, and it was over 30 churches from all over the area, Bay County, Freeland area. And I mean, man, they come in Saginaw, and they just do a wonderful job. They almost brought tears to mine. And I even seen the mayor there with his truck and trailer, and he was looking good, a good-looking trailer. You know, and it's really nice to see, see the mayor passing out some rakes. I didn't see him working with the rake, but I seen him passing them out. So, if anybody wants to see an amazing event, please go down and visit him in the mornings to about 4:00 or 5:00, I think, Mr. Mayor, and see what's happening down there. It's really amazing when citizens come together to help fix up a neighborhood. Other than that, I don't have any other thing else. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say welcome to everybody who's joining us here tonight or who's watching at home. Thank you for taking interest in local government. I want to start my remarks tonight by just saying Happy Father's Day. Yesterday was Father's Day. We have some great fathers that I work with here on this council and some great dads and uncles and cousins throughout our city, and a great, some great dads as well. Congratulations to our graduates, and I'd also like to extend congratulations to Draymond Green, second high school graduate and a second NBA championship. We had some great events in the city this past weekend with the KCQ Music Fest. We also were able to kick off the Laundrie Film Fest, and that will run throughout the summer, every Sunday night beginning at dusk. They have some great, great movies lined up for this year, so I hope you get to an opportunity to take advantage of that. As mentioned, One Week One Street kicked off today, and as, at the latest count, I believe we had 208 volunteers for that, so they're doing some really great work. Also, I think that will be mentioned later, the city will be kicking off Wednesday at Ojibwe Island, and Friends of Hoyt Park asked me to relay that they're looking for participants for youth baseball that will be held at Hoyt Park, and the registration is only $20, but the last day to register for that is June 30th. Thank you so much to our public speakers, Ms. Mackel. I will see you there for the Fourth of July, one of the greatest events I believe that we have in this city. And also, thank you so much to the letter carriers for the work that you guys do. And also, I'd like to echo those same comments from Councilman Balls. Thank you to Angie Miller from the Labor Council for bringing our trade unions here, letting us know, reminding us what they do and how active they are in our community. I did have some questions for Mr. Carwatt that I'll talk with him about regarding Hamilton Street after the meeting. We had some great press today with our firefighters. They were across from NBC 25, returning a family of ducks to the riverfront, so that was great. And I also would just like to say thanks to city staff who were putting in those floating ducks. That's all?
First, I'd like to thank all of our public speakers who spoke. Mr. Bradley, thank you so much. Is it a letter carrier? I too, I appreciate my mailman. He comes at 9:00, 9:30 every day. I appreciate him. And as for Ms. Diane, Ms. Diane, this will be my year. I am coming to the fireworks. I'm going to forget the noise, and I'm going to come to the fireworks. Ms. Depp, I am, I am coming. Ms. Depp, it's always, it's always good to see you. I have a little concern, and I'm going to ask all of the people that listen to my voice in the community. I need for the citizens to step up when they have an issue. I don't mind you calling me, but it always seems to work better when you come and speak at city council. So, I'm asking the citizens to please come out and talk to us. Don't just, don't just call us and say, oh, I want this done, I want this done. But when you call us, be willing to come in front of us and talk about it, and we can really deal with it then. The other thing is, is I'm excited I will be leaving on tomorrow, on tomorrow night, going to Boyne, Boyne, Michigan.
Boyne Mountain.
Boyne Mountain as an ambassador and as a representative for the city of Saginaw for MML. I'm going to the first national conference, and at that conference, it is said that we will talk about fundings and funds for our community. So, you know I'm going to look for some money. I'm going to find us some money somewhere. Saginaw was really, really active this weekend. I didn't participate in a lot, I didn't participate because I had some family emergencies that came up, but I know that people were excited, and I heard about it all weekend from everybody. Wherever you at, we was waiting for you to come and dance, and it's like, nah, I have family problems this weekend, so I stayed at home with my family. But I appreciate the city. I appreciate the workers, and I appreciate my co, my co-team that sits up here with me making the major decisions. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
For our listeners, would you explain MML?
I'm sorry. It's Michigan Municipal League. I sit on the executive board. I represent the city of Saginaw. It has been a long time since we've had It has been a long time since we've had anybody from our area to represent and so I will be on that board until two thousand and nineteen unless y'all don't vote me back in two thousand and eighteen. So, that's what MML is.
Good. That's not my turn yet, so go ahead.
All right. Well, actually, I think we all should thank Councilman Moore for her service on the MML, the Michigan Municipal League. I think that's...
Thank you.
I also want to thank all those for our watching or attending today in person or on the SGTV because this is your government at work. Mr. McKenna, there's something you didn't mention you should have. Tell people to control their dogs. That's one of the worst injuries the male personnel have, so if we get a chance to help you, we should do it. All right. Thank you, Ms. McConney. And also, go high and working, you and the other neighborhood associations working with the CPAT for parks, that's a great start. So, thank you. Now, Ms. Mackel, you've got someone else here from the fireworks. I want to, I don't remember her name, but I want to say to all of those who are here for the fireworks committee, I, no one can say enough about what that committee does. Saginaw Area Fireworks, I want you, everybody to remember that name because that's the name to which any check should be made out and any sponsorship should be given to because they do so much for Saginaw, bringing the fireworks to Ojibwe Island. Support them, please. If you have any, a dollar is a start, ten dollars is better, a hundred dollars is even better. A sponsorship, the levels, I'm sure we can get Diane to give you that information for sponsorships. They bring, I think it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately this year. That's a lot of money they've got to have to sponsor to bring this firework show to Saginaw. It's important. I want to mention to many, everybody in the city that the Brockway resurfacing is starting. That's going to be shut down all the way from Passalt to Grashit for several weeks this summer, so you might need to be looking for alternate routes. That's a major route through the town. So, be aware of that if you are not yet. I do also want to follow up on Councilman Tibbs' comments about the transitional homes from the Michigan Department of Corrections. When they say transitional, that's what they mean. These are for those who are coming back to the community. They are not current prisoners. They are being released, but they need a place to go. Otherwise, they'd be homeless. So, the Department of Corrections has a place for them. There's only three of them right as of last Wednesday, the fourteenth. There's three of them in the city with a total of nine beds and only six people in them. So, Councilman Tibbs is correct. Many people may think that it's the Department of Corrections homes and it, they often are not. So, it's important to recognize this is a very good transition situation for these people. They'd be returning to Saginaw no matter what. It's better to have a place for them so they can be helped getting jobs, places to stay and so forth. I was very surprised at that with that meeting. It was very helpful and I hope more people can learn more about it. All of them are farther than a mile apart, so they're not even close together. Some other things. The, oh, let me see. Maybe I am getting near the end. The KCQ Music Fest, I'm glad the weather held off. We attended, it was wonderful. I noted that I was the only one wearing the T-shirt that we had got. So, speaking of T-shirts, no one mentioned our, you were ready? I'm ahead of you.
I should have.
You should have. No one mentioned the, these wonderful Light Up the City neon pink T-shirts. Everyone, you will be seen. So, yes, they mean light up. So, attend, please attend the kickoff event that's coming up Wednesday on Ojibwe Island, if I remember correctly. It's a great event, it's a great activity for the city. Please participate. They're doing a wonderful job for us. And the fire department is a great participant. The police department does, really gets involved and it's really, really a great help to the citizens to see that our fire department, police department personnel, as well as other staff, are involved in their city on a block-by-block process and care that much about the city. And I think with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, we've covered a lot. I want to thank our speakers also for all you do for the city. Letter carriers, our Fourth of July fireworks and our neighborhood associations, thank you for making Saginaw such a great place that it is, a very important part of that. So, I wanted to thank you on that. This is the first time that I enjoyed the music of country of the KCQ Festival from my backyard. And I'm just about a mile away, just a little over a mile. And so, the wind was blowing just the right way, just the right way, and it was fun. I could hear that and I was just thinking, amazing, just amazing how many people are down there enjoying our community and not just the concert, but the amenities around the city. And certainly a great event. And of course, nothing beats our Fourth of July, nothing. I have been to the Fourth of July in Memphis, Tennessee, right on the Mississippi River and they aren't even close to what we put on here in the city of Saginaw. And so, and I've been also to the ones in Nashville and all over and I'm telling you, I just, I can't explain to them. I said, wow, this is very nice, but boy, you've got to come to Saginaw, Michigan if you really want to experience it. And you've got to get down to the river to experience it. Not only to see it, you need to be down there so you can feel it because you can feel those fireworks down there. It's amazing. So, thank you for that. On Thursday, this Thursday, six o'clock, down at The Stars is their second community meeting on the routes. And so, if anyone is so inclined, and then we'll be bringing, we'll be bringing the information back. That starts at six o'clock this Thursday. That's the second of the community meetings. And so, the first one, listen to the citizens. This one here, they're actually going to present some of the rough draft of some of the routes and the changes to some of the routes to get the feedback from the community. So, please, if you get a chance, put some input into that there for that. Today, I was very pleased to have another T-shirt, nice bright green. Everything seems to be real bright green. This is One Week One Street. I will tell you that this is the last time you'll see this in a very nice, clean condition. Because tomorrow, starting tomorrow, I'll be there the other, the next four days working with people. I was out there today and I just greeted volunteers from all over the place. Like Councilman Ball says, they're from, they're from outside the county, they're within the city, they're within areas, so a good two-hundred-plus were down there today. And I did get a chance to speak to a couple of homeowners and I'll tell you that they are just, the one gentleman was just in tears seeing everything that was being done. And sometimes it's just little things. I mean, but there's painting and there's fixing torches and there's landscaping going on and there's some other bigger things that happen, but yeah, there's a lot, a lot of people down there. So, please. Starts at nine o'clock in the morning. Come around noon time, they have two lunch periods because they split them up into two lunch periods. You're welcome to come in and just visit with them, especially council members. Boy, if you could stop down there during a lunch hour, anywhere from probably eleven, eleven to about one o'clock in that time, just go to the central place that's right there. We are on, and I knew what that was, is it Rocco? I think it's Rocco Street. We're on Rocco Street. So, please stop by, nice big tent up there, have some free lunch and get a chance just to greet the people. It's wonderful for us. We certainly, certainly enjoy that. Also, reference the Saginaw Police Reserves. They are accepting applications. They're in need of more police reserves. We always need more police reserves and they do such a wonderful job. And boy, if you like volunteering, boy, this is a good way to volunteer and get a uniform and there's some training to go with it, but it's well worth it. So, I thank you for all of those. I know I'm probably missing something, but with that, Madam Clerk, let's...
Next order of business will be reports from the manager.
All right, Mr. Manager, what do you have?
Thank you. So, first I want to remind everyone that the Police Chief Citywide Meeting is this Thursday at five-thirty hosted by the Fairgrounds Association and they hold their meetings at the UAW Hall 699, which is at nineteen-eleven Bagley. Councilman Humphries did mention the word map and that was a result of our meeting that we had with our newcomers to Saginaw. So, we have to thank Technical Services for setting that up. They did a good job and as they often do, they built that on their own by doing research so we didn't purchase anything additional, but we have some good people down there that put this stuff together for us. The words that are there to be voted on are words that came from that discussion as well. We did some, we had people throw out words to describe the city and that's what we used. And please go to the website and encourage people to go to the website and vote on those or they can add their own words that could be added to the list. And we want to give this, I think, about a month's time so that we can move on with our, with our mission statement, the group from council that's working on it. So, if we could get that done by the end of July, I think that'd be, would fit into a good timeline. I'd also like to thank the Department of Corrections. I think they sent about a half a dozen people to meet with us and I think Councilman Tibbs and Mayor Protem Plack were there from council, I think, and Chief Ruth was also there. I think they surprised all of us except for maybe Chief Ruth with information about the houses. As Mayor Protem Plack said, there are only four in the city right now and the most in any house is three beds. And they're all at least a mile apart. I would mention too that they did emphasize the transitional nature and if they were not put into these homes, they would be homeless. But the goal is for the state to help them get jobs and move out of those houses as quickly as possible and into their own apartments. So, I think they're doing a good job. I did invite one of the members from MDOC, the regional supervisor, to present at council, so I gave him some dates. So, I will see when he can come and do, give us the information and have, hopefully, some members from the public will be able to attend and hear what he has to say as well. As Councilman Tibbs mentioned, he is at NAG or has been and I believe he's been at the citywide meeting in the past to present the information as well. Also, I did send to council all the documents that they sent, but they also have a tenants' agreement that they have the parolee sign. And as Chief mentioned during the meeting, that does allow police and parole officers to enter that, to enter that domicile. So, they're probably one of the more regulated homes in the city. So, thanks to them. And also, as Chief mentioned in the meeting, we do have an embedded Department of Corrections employee at the city police department who works very well with the officers and does quite a number of details in the city that the police assist them with as well. So, they have a good working relationship. So, it's good to get that information. Also, I would thank the governor who did the signing for the MyThrive initiative in the city of Saginaw and Mayor was in attendance as well as was our own Senator Horn who sponsored the legislation and Representative Guerra who supported it in the House as well as the Senate Majority Leader Mekoff attended the signing as well. I think it's interesting legislation meant to, just an extension of the Brownfield legislation that can spur some pretty large-scale investment in urban areas. That's the goal of it. So, only one project can be approved per year and it does have a local component that has to, the projects have to be approved by city council and they go to the state for approval and they're also reviewed by a third party that the state selects to study their economic impact. So, I think it's pretty interesting legislation and I think it will, it will help urban cities that need some additional investment. Finally, I'm going to have John Stempel come up. He's been working on a couple of projects in the city for development. We've been talking about the civitan for a few years and there were some things that needed to be done with that. One item is that we did need to demolish the school. So, John Stempel and Yolanda Jones identified grant funding to do that, that the city had been awarded. And with that, that gave us an opportunity to talk with some nonprofits about developing that site. So, I'll let John and a representative here address council.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and thanks, Tim, for spilling my whole presentation. That was great. Just to give you a little history on this, this project that we've been working on for about a year and a half, it's a great example of how teamwork and planting a seed can cause, cause something to grow from it. About a year and a half ago, Brendan Moore, Councilwoman Moore, caught me in a corner over at the city school liaison meeting and said, we need to get that civitan back open. And from there, we approached the school board, went through some tough negotiations, convinced them to give us the school for a dollar. After that, and we had a real problem on our hands because we had a school with the roof collapsing that was full of mold that was affecting the air quality in our civitan building. Now, what are we going to do? So, then I go to Yolanda's office and Kane Franklin's office and said, I need some money. And lo and behold, I don't know how they do this, I think sometimes they have a machine in the back, but they said, go. And they had identified the funds to abate the dangerous building that's attached to So, that's, that's sort of, we loaded up the bases, you know? We got the school, we got rid of the school, and now what are we going to do? That's when the Lamar Woodley Foundation is up the bat. Sorry for using baseball as a football. I was wandering through a building with, with Mr. Woodley and Tom Miller and Mr. Woodley says, I need to go see the civitan because that's where I grew up. And over the past six months or so, I've had the privilege to get to know the Woodleys and we put together an agreement and here we are today. So, it was very hard two meetings ago to sit in the back knowing that this was in the works, not to spill the beans, but I appreciate your patience. And with that, we have with us tonight Mrs. Jordan Woodley and she'd like to share some things with you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So, as he mentioned, my husband is very adamant about the civitan and this is something that he has felt strongly about over the years because he went to school on one side and after-school programs on the other. So, it was great news to find out that we would be able to possibly do something with the building to bring it back to life for the city. And for our goals for the building are to make it a community building for everyone. So, for the morning session, we would like to bring in parents from the community from nine to twelve, a rough estimate of time, but we want to have life skill classes for some of the parents in the community because we feel that to help some of the children, we have to start with the parents. So, we want to try to utilize that time because most of the students will be in school. So, we have them come in approximately nine to twelve. Then we will segue into elementary kids coming in, maybe three-thirty to five-thirty, separate a little bit of time and then have junior and high school come in six to eight, which is similar hours to how they separated previously, as my husband has always said. He remembers trying to wait to get to the older group, but, so, some of the programs that we're looking to have is we talked to a local bank, having a financial literacy program, just, especially for some of the parents because we want them to understand, you know, having, the importance of having a bank account, your credit score, just things to help them in their lifelong goal to maybe owning their own house or something and to show their children how to manage a bank account. And these programs will also, we'll have a program to decide for the parents in the morning and also a financial portion for some of the students later in the afternoon. Foreign language, we would like to offer some type of foreign language. Now, some of these goals for these other courses will be coming in maybe once or twice a month, but the main... a month, but the main focus will be after-school help with homework with reading, writing, and math. And then we will segue into some of these programs for the other things. So, the other is foreign language. We talked about having someone talk about young chef coming in, just to have safety in the kitchen for kids, because a lot of these kids are at home by themselves when they get home, and teaching them how to make a quick, safe, healthy meal for themselves without harming themselves, hopefully. And acting and drama classes, youth entrepreneurship, just so that many of them can understand that some of the things that they're doing now is business, and how to help them get started in doing some of these things to, for their lifelong journey. We want to also incorporate the DARE program again. We've talked to Officer Reggie Williams in just trying to bridge that gap with police officers and the youth to have a better connection. And lastly, technology. And as we know now, many of the things that we do involves technology, and some of the schools do not have readily available technology for each student to use, and maybe just bringing in different people to teach them different programs, how to use Microsoft Word, just anything that would help them in their future use with using technology outside of Facebook and being on some of the other social media sites. But this is something that we, you know, look forward to doing and providing as a community. And also for our, the two gyms, for one gym, we would like to open up some time for some of the seniors maybe to come in to walk around. We also talked about partnering with, bringing in students with special needs, allowing them time to come in and walk and do things, because a lot of times when you're in another facility, it's intimidating going to do things with other kids, and they don't have their own space, so maybe, you know, giving them opportunity. And then also on the other gym that we have, opening that up to the other kids that have recreational time, just to get movement, to get them to be healthy lifestyles. So, just overall, we hope to make this a building for everyone to utilize.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that sounds like a great plan for the building, so I'm glad that we could get that agreement worked out, and it's on the agenda this evening. Have to thank Lamar Woodley Foundation, and of course, it would be someone from the University of Michigan that would think of such a great initiative. So, so we appreciate that. With that, that concludes the management update.
We are now at the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and then the city's website, and also on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Council or Mayor Protem Clock?
Yes, 1, 10, and 11.
Any other exceptions? Council members, any other exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Yes, item number one, approve the June 5, 2017 regular council meeting minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That, that's the minutes of last council meeting, but we also had a closed session. So the question I have is, do we need to have an amendment to the minutes to approve the minutes of the closed session, or we just have a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session?
The minutes of the closed session. They would not be included in the regular meeting.
Approve the June 5, 2017 closed session and the regular council meeting minutes.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any further questions?
Any comments being, yes.
What Councilman Clock is moving is that we include the closed sessions minutes in the approval of the regular session. I'm just...
That was the question I was raising. Should we have separate? If we can do it all at one time, it's fine with me. That was the motion to do it at one time.
You would not be including the minutes of the regular meeting? Just be approving both sets of minutes in one motion.
Okay. Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Item number 10.
If I may, I'll address 10 and 11 together because the only issue that I have is there isn't in my, it actually has been brought to my attention, there's no reference to authorize the mayor or designate to execute the agreements and any related documents, and that needs to be included, I believe. Is that correct?
I need the city manager.
Oh, the city manager? All right, then that's fine. I would move that we amend the council communications to authorize the city manager to execute the agreements and any related documents.
It's been moved and supported. For the amendment. This is the amendment only, okay? Any other discussion on amendment to the original? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amendment passes?
With that, I would move the approval of Council Communications 10 and 11.
And there's support for that? Yes?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Council members, do any of the individual council members serving on any of the boards have any comments or reports from your particular board or commission? Being none? We have appointment for boards. They'd be number 1 through 7. Is that correct? Yep, 1 through 7.
It's been moved that we approve 1 through 7. We have room for exceptions.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next business is introduction of ordinances. Our first one is to amend Section 52.15 Water Meters and Section 5257A Water Billing of Chapter 52, titled Water, of Title V Public Works.
Council members, what's your pleasure? It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and this will be held over under the charter provision.
Our next ordinance this evening is to amend Chapter 71 of Title VII Traffic Regulations by adding a new section titled Cost Recovery.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on it? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries, and this will also be laid over under our charter provision.
Our next order of business is resolutions. We have one this evening. It is for the compilation and revision of the city's code of ordinances.
We need a motion to adopt.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion, council members? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, we are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
Council members, is there anything to come before this council? Anything come before this council? Any other besides Councilwoman Moore, Brendan Moore? Go ahead.
I would just like to publicly thank the Woodley Foundation and John Stempel, because I know, but I didn't corner you in a meeting like that, so don't have people thinking I'm a bully. But I would like to publicly thank you for, and the citizens, we all thank you for what you do and what you continue to do for our city. So thank you so much. Tell your husband, we are so proud of him in the city of Saginaw.
You got it. Council members?
It's been moved.